Everybody call this meeting to order?
Mr. Senator, would you please read the roll call?
Mrs. Cockhill, here. Mrs. Crabtree, here. Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mrs. Inteher is not here yet. Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Roman?
Mr. DeMarzo, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Are there any modifications to tonight's board agenda? There are none, we'll proceed with the agenda. Recognizations and achievements. Dr. Shul.
So I'm gonna reintroduce Mr. DeMarzo, who's gonna come up here and the board will remember this was a recognition that we were hoping to do at your last meeting, but I think it had a little bit of a conflict with a banquet for obviously a team that's here to receive a very deserved recognition and so they were celebrating at their own building. But it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Mr. DeMarzo and let him tell you about the accomplishments of the Wheaton Warrenville South Speech Team.
Thank you. It'll take just a second. I muted it or not? Is it all the way up? All the way up? Takes a second. You think I would be good with these?
By now. Oh, there we go. Hi. Yeah, last month, we had, the same date was on our awards banquet, so sorry we couldn't come. And actually, the state competition was back in February. The speech team, we had auditions in September. We had, we have over 100 members on the team and it's every Saturday from November through February. And this year, we got second place in the HSA competition. It's our school's ninth second place to go along with our nine state championships. So we have 22 top three in the state, which is second most. And so I just brought some people to introduce the students and we like to carry the trophy around with us, okay? Little Stanley Cup. But we're missing a couple of people with their involvement in the musical, which is this weekend, so if you're looking for something to do, come on down to Wheaton Warrenville South, "How to Succeed in Business Without Really Trying." A little shout out. We're missing Beth Gaylor, who's a junior. How Speech Works is some of the, there's 14 different events and I'll explain a little bit about how they did. So junior Beth Gaylor got fourth in state. She's in the pit orchestra. She wrote an original oratory about our listening skills and how we as a society need to improve upon those. In third place, we had senior James Zarowski here. He wrote an informative speech and he's actually was elected to be the graduation speaker, so you'll hear him in a couple of weeks. And then runner-up in oratorical declamation, we have senior and team captain Greg Nussbaum. In that event, you find a speech written by somebody else and you present it as if it were your own. So he found a speech by Charlie Kaufman, a screenwriter, because Greg actually wants to be a screenwriter. He's studying at New York University in the fall for dramatic writing, so captain in second place. And then we had, we were lucky enough to have two individual state champions, which is our 54th and 55th in state history, or in our school history in the state. One is junior Maddie Cordgett. She did humorous interpretation. That's where you find a play or a story and you interpret all the characters in an eight-minute scene. And it was called "Graduation for Dummies," so that did so well to some humor. And then our other state champion was senior John Murphy in special occasion speaking. This is a speech where a student writes on their own, they come up with an audience and a message, and his was on nonlinear thinking and how we get stuck in a rut so many times that we need to go beyond just the normal path. And both were amazing accomplishments for those students and all of them contributed. How Speech Works is you're an individual, but then your points contribute to a team as a whole. And so their individual accomplishments allowed for our team to have some great success. Then you'll notice that we have a lot of other people up here because there's an event called Performance in the Round. It's a 15-minute performance in the round. I know it sounds pretty, but you can make a play, it could be original, and we were state champions in that for our second time in school history. And so I'll just go down and give them some recognition. We have freshman Justin Bass, freshman Eli Rubenstein, but he's in the pit for orchestra, sophomore Sean Purpleheimer, who's also in the pit for orchestra, Jordan Sipla, A.J. Stretherz, and then Paige Valente, who's also in the pit, or no, she's in the musical. And then juniors Andrew Bass, Kaitrin Gallagher, Julia Howenstein, Damon Leach, Jacob Schaefer, and Tommy Todeski, and then senior and one of our other team captains, Sarah Jocelyn. And this year, it was mainly directed by Roberta James, who's directing the musicals. She was upset that she couldn't be here. And it was about, it was a play called "The Shining Lives" about women who worked in the radium dial factory out in Ottawa, Illinois. They worked in the factory and they contracted radium poisoning. So it was not really an upliftor, but these students worked really hard and did some beautiful work that was recognized all over the state. We're just very appreciative that you invited us to come and share some of the things that they do because they worked really hard a lot of months throughout the year and do things that you guys would be really proud of. They served our district and our towns of Wheaton Warrenville extremely well, all throughout the season, but also down in Peoria, the state. So thank you.
If you wouldn't mind coming around, the board members would love to shake all of your hands. If you could just kinda start here and work around the table, we'd really, really appreciate it.
Mr. DeMarzo, can I hold up the trophy just a little bit?
Oh, yeah. We get a nice big trophy. And then for the PI, for the Performance in the Round, we have a flag for it, too. Thank you.
I know each board member in the interaction with the public here is from the public from time to time. Thanks for being a board member. Boy, it must be a really lousy job and hard job. It is not a lousy job, and we can do something like this tonight, it makes it all worthwhile. So we now go to public comments. And we have two who signed up for public comments. The first is Aunt Jan Shaw.
Hello there. It's been a while since I've been here.
Ms. Shaw, just some prep to our comments here. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district and public input in a variety of venues is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, the general credit process, and your comments tonight. Please use the microphone as you're about to use. State your name and address. If you're unwilling to state your address, just recognize or tell us whether you're a resident of the district or not. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We ask that you be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or counter some of the members of the board or staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat with the board or present your comments to us in writing. Thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Okay, I'm Jan Shaw. It's been a while since I've been here. I haven't met Dr. Shul yet, but I'd like to say hello and Miss Crabtree on the way in. Talking about public comments and the fact that they're appreciated. If a tree falls in the forest and nobody gets there to hear it, does it make a sound? If you put something out for public comment, but the public noticed, it never goes out where anybody in the public will ever find it, did it really go out for public comment? We have a couple of things on the board agenda tonight to be approved. One is the health curriculum for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I did find that if you look way down in the list of things on the left-hand column and click on the things about curriculum proposed, you will find it. But odds are that nobody's gonna go looking on the website and read everything to locate that. We also have AP Human Geography up there for public comment tonight. It was in the board packet for last month to go out for public comment. It was in the board packet this night to be approved. And I can't find it out there for public comment. You can correct me if I'm wrong. But you know, back among the circle, I asked Mrs. Loracino to please put out the high school stuff for public comment up on the Friday Focus. Her response to me was, well, it was in the board packet and it'll be on the minutes once they're approved. Of course, those minutes are approved at the same meaning that they approved those items that were out for public comment. Then you got no comments or very few on it. That one you got a few on because I told a couple of people it was out there. But other than the folks I told, nobody knew it was out for public comment. The stuff that's out for public comment this month, nobody knew it was out for public comment, okay? I even emailed a couple of guys saying, hey, why can't we put this in the Friday Focus? Because you know what? There may actually be a couple of parents in this district that care about what their kids are learning. And if they knew that their opinions were wanted, perhaps they would take a look at it and tell you something. Engage 200, the same thing. You tell us your opinions. Every time I went to it, I went to five out of six meetings, we talked about common court at the table. It never made the write-up. The write-up that came out as the final write-up could have been written prior to the very first Engage 200 meeting because you really didn't want our opinions. The questions were very much slanted to get you the opinion that you were looking for. It was a sham. So anyway, getting back to our health courses. When I was a child, we learned first of all our own, you know, oral gender, like at the sixth grade, and learned about the opposite sex in eighth grade. I see we're not teaching in sixth grade. Is that a little young? Are these kids being desensitized by getting too much too early? And a bit about mental health. I'm really questioning, is an eighth grade child old enough to understand the meanings of all this stuff? And including stuff like recognizing symptoms and helping friends out with it. I'm sorry, if you've got mental health problems in eighth grade or your friend does, you should be going to an adult and have another eighth grade kid for help. So basically, my gist of this is, please postpone the voting on those things that you're approving tonight for another month. Make sure that they actually get out to the public where the public can see it. And the stuff that's on the agenda and ready to be put out for public comment, please make sure it gets at least a one-liner in the Friday News Focus, you know, that email that goes out every month, every week, so that the public knows that it's out there. Better yet, if you can get the Daily Herald, there's some time to include the fact that these things are out for public comment, that would be great. As far as AP US or human stuff, human geography, I guess that was a course. Is our opinion even wanted? Or is that one of those things where the textbook teaches the students so that the students can learn the test? In other words, who actually sets the curriculum for that? Is it the text producers, test producers for the AP courses that set the test stuff and then everybody else just goes to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. The next individual signed up for public comment is Harold Lantz. Harold, I assume you can apply instructions on a day before a transcript, so I won't appear on the other one.
Oh, yes, sir. I just wanted to discuss a couple of items in today's agenda. First one's number 12, a lease agreement for elementary staff laptops. I'd like to know where the 550 laptop number came from. I estimated there were about 240 classroom teachers and probably another 150 others there for a total of 390. Where are the extra laptops going? Do we need that many? How old are the current PCs teachers and staff are using and do they really need to be replaced at this time? It would be nice to have this type of detail included in the agenda package. By the way, you are actually approving $450,000 for the laptops, not the $150,000, by voting for this item tonight because it's a three-year lease. Regarding the purchase of flat panel displays, are these flat panel displays going to be replacing the smart boards if the bulbs burn out on the projector units? How much do the bulbs cost to replace compared to buying a new flat panel? Why are we purchasing 50 units when only 43 are needed? As everyone knows about technology, it keeps advancing and prices usually decline over time. So why would the district keep $7,000 of displays in inventory? On the treasury bond coverage, I find it very ironic. The higher your working cash balances are, the higher your insurance premiums are. And regarding the other part, the action agenda, the wireless refresh at the high schools, the approvals for $272,000. No place in the agenda does it state how many are being refreshed, the number of being added for classrooms, and the number of being added to non-instructional areas. It would be informative to receive the cost of the access points, cost of materials to install new access points, and the cost of the actual installation and by whom. Why is the district getting charged $87,000 for the high school rollout in the attachment that's attached to the agenda? Now, the last I want to talk about is the board representation in WWEA bargaining. Why is it slated for future topics while it's happening right now? During the candidates forum before the election, three of the board members sitting here was in agreement of placing board members on the WWEA bargaining team. So I'd like to know why this is not being discussed now while you guys are in contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lantz. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Jeff? Thank you. I've got just a couple of things on the report tonight and I'm actually gonna start first by introducing Faith and some of her team in the English Language Department. Recently, shared a couple of really nice celebrations about some progress of our students within the EL program and I wanted to stop us to share it tonight, so. Go ahead.
Happy to do that. We have some really exciting news for our English learner students. This year, District 200 had 244 students actually exit the program. And in order to exit the program, you have to do well on the access test, which is a state test that measures listening, speaking, reading, and writing. To kind of put that in context, that 244, that's 81 more students than last year. The state of Illinois kind of sets the bar that they would like the districts to have 12% of their students in the English learner program exit each year. We had 20% in District 200 this year. And what do we attribute a lot of that to? We've done a lot of work, especially at the elementary and the middle schools, to create a reading and a writing framework for all students that really helps out with vocabulary instruction, which obviously benefits our English learners a lot. And then we've also worked really hard to raise the bar of the expectations of our students in most classes. We created a report card for all of the parents of our students of English learners so they not only get how are they doing on standards in reading and writing, in English in regular class, but also on how they are moving along on their English proficiency. That combined with the diligence of Kerry Keefe, the director of English Learner, and working collaboratively with staff and building administrators, we have a lot of happy faces out there. And those students, now that they've exited that program, that means they're not pulled during the day for English learner instruction, they're in their classroom the full day to catch up with some of the content things. So we're very, very excited about that progress.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that. Again, I just wanna commend the work that Faith and her department have done. You know, we talked, I think, a lot during the Engage 200 process about the diversity in our student population and so, just very factually speaking, the quicker that we are able to exit our kids through the EL program, the quicker we're able to focus on the content acquisition that we do with all students within our schools. So it really is something that I think saves us tremendously and helps us to accomplish a lot more as a system. Couple of other things that I wanted to mention tonight, I had mentioned it in a recent board email, I just wanna quickly recognize Donald Robinson. For those of you that have had a chance to meet Donald Robinson, he was running the Community Outreach Center in Carroll Stream. Truly has been, in the time that he worked there, a real advocate for our Carroll Stream community and making sure that we are engaged with Carroll Stream community. He's gonna be stepping down from that role, but I just wanted to recognize and thank Donald and we certainly look forward to working with his successor at the Outreach Center. In your green folders tonight, board members have information from Dr. Rammer about our two graduation ceremonies next Saturday, so pretty detailed directions on where you need to be and at what time and we're not, certainly as you read it, if you've got any questions, let me know or let Dr. Rammer know and we wanna make sure that we're good to go. Wanted to mention that this summer, change that is gonna impact board members as well, we're gonna be making a migration this summer over from our current Exchange email and calendar service to Gmail. Everything is going over to Gmail. And so that will impact the account that you have with the district as well. I can assure you, if you know how to navigate Outlook, you will do fine with navigating Gmail, but I do wanna let you know that if by chance you need any help with kind of becoming familiar with Gmail or the calendar tool through it, please let me know and I'd be happy to set up, you know, something in advance of a board meeting where we can just kind of do a little tutorial or put you directly in contact with Rod or one of the individuals from his department who can give you a little tutorial and make sure that you're fully set up with kind of ready to move over. That is happening June 15th. So it is coming up, middle of June, that we'll be making that migration and we've been working hard to make sure that buildings are prepared and ready to migrate over as One final thing that I wanted to mention, again, just kind of put it on the board's radar because we've been talking about it a little bit up in Wheaton recently, did get notice there actually took place, I think, a little earlier this week down in Warrenville, that they've begun discussion about possibly the creation of a TIF District Number Four in Warrenville. They're looking at the area that's kind of the intersection of Route 59 and 56 and some of the properties really on kind of all four corners ultimately of that. So it's in the very early stages of discussion, but Mr. Farley and I are gonna be meeting with them to try to understand a little bit more about what they're seeking to do. Pretty decent-sized area that they're trying to incorporate into a TIF, about 250 acres, so it's a pretty good-sized piece of property. So I just wanted to get that on the board's radar quickly. And then the last thing that I'll mention, had sent a little bit of information out on this yesterday, we are gonna be watching very closely here over the next couple of days and weeks for that matter. Legislative developments both in the state houses as well as the Illinois State Board of Education. State Board tomorrow is going to be talking about a shift in the way that they prorate general state aid funds, if they need to prorate general state aid funds, which they have had to for the last number of years. And that shift would move it away from an across-the-board proration to a per pupil proration and candidly, it kind of has the same impact of a mini Senate Bill 16, Senate Bill 1. Just in the early modeling of that, it would indicate a loss of about $1.2 million to District 200 in the way that would get redistributed next year again. It is not up for a vote tomorrow at the state board, it is simply on as a discussion item and in fact, they've, just in the last 24 hours, they've amended the packet to take the state superintendent's recommendation out of that packet, so it is just on as a discussion item for tomorrow at their meeting, but stay tuned. And then obviously, at the state level, as the session comes to a close, starting to hear a lot of rumblings about, you know, legislation, at least getting introduced. I don't know how legit the passing of some of it is, but I think a lot of it is kind of getting a feel for what people think about some of the concepts that the governor's introduced in his turnaround agenda. There are a couple of bills now out there related to property tax freeze as well as, I think, some rumblings about cost shift, pension cost shift, so stay tuned. I have one more good news. Sorry. I always learn to sandwich bad news in between good news. Also wanted to let the board know, I got notice this week from Mike Jacoby, who is the executive director of IASB, the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, letting us know that Colin Wilkie recently completed a required course load to get a designation as a facilities management director. It's a set of professional development that Colin sought out on his own in support of, I think, the work that he does in the district and I wanted to mention it to the board that we really appreciate Colin going through that program and know that'll bring value to the district.
Thanks, Jeff. And I appreciate you ending your presentation on upbeat after the roll call of bad news you're sharing with us there.
I have a question about the proration. Do we know what the state board or the state superintendent is or the ISBE is actually recommending? So they haven't recommended, this is a piece of legislation. Tell me about them. I mean, I'm kind of confused.
It is not a piece of legislation. So when, the very first time that the state had to begin prorating general state aid when it didn't have enough money to cover what should have been the appropriation, it was ISBE that made the decision to handle proration in the way that they did. It did not require any legislative action and I don't believe that the state board believes that it would require any kind of legislative action to then shift the model if they want to. So it is a topic, that concept is something that's been talked about for a little while, ever since the first year that proration went into effect. There certainly are districts that feel as though they were penalized more based on their reliance on state aid with the across-the-board percentage cut instead of the per pupil cut. So there's not a formal recommendation. Again, as I had mentioned in the original packet, there was at least what the state superintendent had as a recommendation, but it is on only for discussion tomorrow, there will be no action. But I think we'll get a much better sense after the discussion tomorrow of the direction that this is gonna go for next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the superintendent? If not, we will move to the consent agenda. I am to read the title of every item on the consent agenda, so bear with me. First, acceptance of a gift from Special Educational Alliance 200, SEA 200. Second, acceptance of a gift from the Department of Leadership, Educational Psychology, and Foundations at Northern Illinois University. Third, acceptance of a gift to all elementary school. Fourth, acceptance of a gift to Pleasant Hill Elementary School. Fifth, approval of a high school AP Human Geography curriculum. Sixth, approval of middle school health standards. Seventh, approval to post a middle school health textbook. Eighth, approval to post novels for high school world languages. Nine, approval to set the last student's attendance day for 2014, 2015 school year. Ten, approval of student handbook changes for 2015, 2016 school year. Approval of athletic trainer services contract renewal, number 11. Number 12, approval of lease agreement for elementary staff laptops. Thirteen, approval to purchase classroom flat panel projection. Fourteen, approval of temporary construction easement at Wheaton North High School. Fifteen, approval of resolution appointing treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond. Sixteen, approval of treasurer's bond coverage. Seventeen, approval of bills payable and payroll. Eighteen, approval of minutes of April 8, 2015, open and closed, April 22, 2015, open. April 27, 2015, open and closed. April 29, 2015, special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of closed session prior to December 2013 as allowable by law. And nineteen, approval... Fourth, acceptance of a gift to Pleasant Hill Elementary School. Fifth, approval of a high school AP Human Geography curriculum. Sixth, approval of middle school health standards. Seventh, approval to post middle school health textbook. Eighth, approval to post novels for high school world languages. Nine, approval to set the last student attendance day for 2014, 2015 school year. Ten, approval of student handbook changes for 2015, 2016 school year. Approval of athletic trainer services contract renewal, number 11. Number 12, approval of lease agreement for elementary staff laptops. Thirteen, approval to purchase classroom flat panel projection. Fourteen, approval of temporary construction easement at Wheaton North High School. Fifteen, approval of resolution appointing treasurer and approving the treasurer's bond. Sixteen, approval of treasurer's bond coverage. Seventeen, approval of bills payable and payroll. Eighteen, approval of minutes of April 8th, 2015, open and closed, April 22, 2015, open. April 27, 2015, open and closed. April 29, 2015, special meeting. And approval to destroy recordings of closed session prior to December 2013 as allowable by law. And nineteen, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Is there any information we need from staff or are we going to receive from staff?
I don't think so, just as we pointed out a few other times, if you look at the first four items on that list, all gifts, they total about $14,500. So again, some of those are from PTA, which we've acknowledged many times. There's also generous gift from Northern Illinois University supporting some professional development efforts. Much appreciated.
Are there any questions or comments with respect to the consent agenda items I've read?
I was wondering if you could explain, provide a little bit more detail on the flat panel projection system going into the classrooms that don't have smart boards? Can you explain that product and that functionality?
Yeah, the 43 classrooms actually don't have a projection at all, projector or smart board. These, I think we're confused with the concept of a smart board that are in, you know, 250 to 300 classrooms across the district and TV with smart apps. It's the, it's just a flat panel TV so that they actually have projection at the size of 60 inches. It's about the same size they get in the projection on those smart boards as it is now. So we really saw as a committee, committees of fit in those, projection was something that was needed. So we had to finish outfitting the remaining 43 classrooms out there. The, again, smart brand with touch capability is a smart board. These are flat panel projection TVs, but they do have smart apps. They have embedded web browsers, embedded YouTube, so the teacher doesn't have to have their PC connected to it where they can go and find the YouTube videos for display, present things from either the Google Classroom or something without having to have a PC on it with embedded apps. So it's really projection TV, I guess really is what it is, is a flat panel display. The biggest difference between these and projection where there is not, is projector bulbs are limited and a high cost of value when the flat panel TVs that are out there now, they're getting on average 100,000 hours out of them, which as far as surpasses the 10,000 to 12,000 hours you can get on bulbs that we're buying now. So it's the cost effective, it's about the same amount of distance or same amount of screen size you'll see in the, you know, typical classroom. I guess some of those other ones do present a little bit larger. This would be a great TV to have in my basement, but they work for what we'll need to do in the classroom.
So are those directly connected to the network or are they through Wi-Fi?
They'll be directly connected to the network.
Ms. Inteher?
I have a question, you know, back at the last committee of the whole. I believe Rob went through quite a number of details about all of the expenditures we're being asked to approve tonight. And I would just like to ask, is there any change from what was presented based on the questions that we heard from the public tonight? Is there a change or is this pretty much what you showed us when we had our committee of the whole and you proposed the technology? Because it seems very much the same to me. I was a little bit surprised to hear that, you know, that there was a feeling that this was new information. So if there's no change, then I'm, which I didn't perceive any, but I would like to make sure of that.
It was consistent. I certainly understood, I think, some of the questions in terms of clarity around the projection TV because we talked about projection. I don't think talked about the specific brand of projection, but the three purchases tonight, it's consistent with what we talked about.
You know, I think the one thing that might be helpful in a future meeting is to, since we're moving towards what the fit recommendation is, is to kind of maybe kind of show a model classroom, what it looks like and to see it in a different way than just bullet points on the list. It would help us kind of imagine what that would be in the classroom. So request for future meetings whenever that comes up.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one on the approval of the lease. This is more a question. One of the bidders is a unit that I'm affiliated with. Do we need to remove me or remove this out of here to win trust is what I'm specific. And I'm thinking I should not vote on that. So I'd like to potentially move that out of the consent agenda and deal with it in the action. Otherwise, I don't know how I can abstain or accept the others.
I think it's a point we'll take and we'll move that one item to the action item. So we can have a formal vote on it.
Laptop, please.
Thank you, Jeff.
It will move it to the bottom of the action items. That's the way the system is designed. It should be now moved if you refresh for good.
We're good to go?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Rod, could you just, speaking of that item 12 that's just been removed or moved to the action, can you elaborate a little bit about that delta on the 550 laptop versus maybe that dovetailed number of staff is X and there's 550 laptops?
Do you want to talk about that now or during when it's up on action? Now it's fine.
It's actually, the body count is 536. The extra remaining will be for if there are move-ins. We do have a couple directors here in the district. When we talk about classrooms, we're also talking about, this is every certified employee at the elementary level, including those that might work in this building. So it is a head count, body count by name. It is not by what we might see as a position or a classroom count across the district.
Thank you, Rod. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing now I ask for a motion to approve the consent item agendas.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Crabtree moved and Ms. Inteher seconded. Ms. Center, would you conduct a roll call, vote on the motion?
And board members, please vote online. Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kikehill?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Yeah, his name is grayed out on my computer.
I didn't see anything on my computer.
He's in. He didn't join the meeting.
I gotta join the meeting.
Have to reset now or what?
No.
Everybody, back to the beginning.
Welcome board president.
He's still better than I did.
Sorry about that. All right, now we move to action items. The first action item up on the agenda is the approval of the food service management contract. Do we have any information from the staff, Dr. Schuler?
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Farley, he's got a couple inter-dictory comments.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We're at the point, as a national school lunch participant, that every five years we are required to bid out the food service contract. This is closely monitored by Illinois State Board of Education. ISB, as a person designated to this, we are required to go on their website, grab their prototype, put our bid together, send it back to them for approval before we send it out. And then we put the bids out. We had three replies to the bid. The information's contained in the report. We are required to look for the criteria, make sure the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, and go through all those criteria. We did do a site visit. Chartwells was the lowest bidder. Mrs. Maher, who's here tonight, took a group of not only students, but parents and staff members and did a site visit. Chartwells also went through the information to make sure that they met all the criteria. So the recommendation tonight is to make a change to Chartwells based on that being the lowest responsible, responsive bidder. This is a change from our current vendor, Aramark, who we've had a good relationship with. Unfortunately, this is how the operation works as far as the bidding goes and the requirements that are under the National School Lunch Program. So we are making the change. I believe every time we've been at, at least in my tenure, we've had to make a change. So this is the nature somewhat of the animal. So I'll answer any questions the board may have.
Are there any questions from board members?
I noted that the committee went out, that included students, that went out to go look at the site visits. Did the students like the meals?
Yes, they did. They, we were able to try anything we wanted at the schools that we visited. So I encouraged the students. I said, you know, eat what you normally wouldn't, eat what you, you know, like. You know, they definitely had their favorites, but they did like the food. So that was, yes, that was what I definitely wanted to know.
Bill, did, as a part of this analysis, were there any reference checks, number one? Number two, are, what school sizes are similar, we've been naming, you know, that could be similar to District 200 that they're doing business with today?
Site visit they went on to was Barrington School District, which is one of our benchmark districts. They also are in
DeKalb?
DeKalb, I think we said, called DeKalb School District, which is a district a little bit deeper out into the corn belt. But there are like-sized unit districts that we did speak to. I think Barrington was a site visit.
Mark?
I have a question about the, so we visited Barrington. Is it the same, do we know that they pay, you know, the same price per meal that our students would pay? And I'm thinking maybe they're spending more money and maybe that's why the food is, you know. I mean, I'm just trying to protect our kids and make sure that, you know, we get the same thing as the Barrington kids, you know, for that amount of money.
I can't speak to their menu pricing or, and I believe they're in the National School Lunch Program as well up there. So they're running something similar to how we would run it. They follow the same dietary guidelines that are in the National School Lunch Program. So I, you know, I believe it'll be comparable.
So is our meal cost per student going to be the same or comparable to? How does it vary from what we had last year with Aramark?
You actually, there's a formula that we have to go through and look at as far as what, you were asking about what we charge students?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to look at, there's national guidelines as to what we can charge students based on their reimbursement rates and things of that nature. So we're going to be looking at that to, that's kind of dictated by the National School Lunch Program. I believe a few years ago, we actually had to raise it based on the National School Lunch Program, raise our fee to students.
Bill, as we've seen, I shouldn't say this factually, but it's my understanding that we're seeing degradation in the number of students utilizing the service. If that trend continues, is there any open contract that we negotiated? Or that's one question. The other question is, how do they base the price? Is it on a number of students, number of meals, the average of meals?
The bid provided a estimated meal count that all bidders were able to look at. You know, the degradation, I think, is a nationwide problem based on changes to, from the federal government as to what we're, you know, serving students. And I think there's some good changes in there. We don't have fryers in our schools anymore. Like, I think pizza and fries used to be pretty popular. But we did have to change, as members of the National School Lunch Program, the dietary offerings to our students. So I think that's some of the degradation that we're seeing from, and I think it's the, you know, across the country. I would go back to the students in Kansas that did a YouTube video for the first lady about their school meals. So, you know, again, we'll look at ways to try and do enhancements and try and encourage, you know, work with them about it to try and encourage participation.
Can I just ask, how does it work if you're on a pre or reduced lunch? Do you get, can you get whatever you want or a certain amount spent every day or how does that?
It's a basic type A meal. I maybe you can speak a little bit better to it. She goes out and audits. We have to do it somewhat anonymously, but it's not a open book per se. Students that are reduced, I think, pay 40 cents per year, obviously free. We do have the meal cards that is not identifying. So at the point of service, kids are not singled out or anything in the like event nature. And we try and make it as non-obvious as possible.
But they get whatever they want?
Well, there's, they have to get certain components that make up the type of meal to qualify for the National School Lunch. Benders will work with them to try and make sure that, you know, that works out so it's not obvious.
I have a question on the, is this, the bid number that we're looking at is 2,200, something? And is that per year? You know, is it fixed per year? Does it move? You know, I think, what are we looking at, a four-year, four-annual renewal? Is that, that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand that. And then secondarily, is there any, what I'll call, you know, hidden transitional costs of changing vendors? You know, again, the bids are very close and, you know, if we're going to incur, we have to incur some other costs that are reflected in these. I'd like to be aware of that. End of comment.
You know, anytime you do the transition, and I think you touched on it, I should have answered Mr. Gambiani's question. It is, it is, 2 million is a yearly price. We bring it back to the board for four renewals. We could decide a bit after one year if we chose to rebid. So after the first year, we'll either bring you a renewal or we would go out to bid again. It is, I will say there is going to be some time, staff time on the transition. So, you know, there also is that transition angst that staff numbers that work for the Food Service Management Company, a lot of them have worked in our schools and have wore Chartwells, Sedexo, Aramark, Marriott, you know, hats in the time that they've been here because they're pretty much stayed in the district and just go with the flow as they change. And our bid tries to reflect some protection of those folks, individuals' benefits that they've earned over time, vacations, those type of things. So yes, there will be some of that, probably staff time to work on the transition. But like I said, we've done it every time, so I think we're pretty used to it.
What was the cost last year on Sunday? Those are comparative costs, has it gone, has the comparative cost gone down or up?
The costs are, you know, again, in the bid, it's an estimate based on the meals we believe we will serve. So it's kind of a moving target. So, you know, it's based off of an estimate. Prices that we've probably paid or costs we've paid out to Aramark has probably gone down because the meal counts have gone down. And, you know, and similarly, food sales closed down and some of the, the national lunch cost does tend to go up. So we do get those, still get those reimbursement, if we get over a million dollars from the National School Lunch Program. I think our overall meal rate though, from this bid compared to the prior one is
A little bit lower.
A little bit lower.
Are there opportunities in the, I'm thinking mainly at the elementary level where there's one entree served for kids? Are there opportunities for things like a salad bar? Just to get our children who, maybe this is their main meal of the day that they get, to actually be able to eat it. There's a lot of waste, I know, that happens with this. Is there opportunities for stuff like that?
Well, we do have a variety of entrees at the elementary currently, at our elementary buildings. But I know we changed that a little bit this year at different schools, depending on what the principal thinks that might work. Because that's my goal too. I don't want to serve things that students don't eat, whether they're a free student, reduced student, or paid student. I want to serve what they're going to eat, but also within the guidelines that are set by the government. But as far as a salad, I mean, I think that is an option. I know at the secondary level, they, we do have a salad that's considered a reimbursable meal. And I know Bill spoke on it a little bit earlier, but that's what's considered our type A lunch, would be this reimbursable meal. So there's different components to that. And I'm not a dietitian, so that's why we have other people doing that. But it would be something that we could certainly look into for the elementary students. We did have one
We have salads.
We did currently? Because I know we used to, we used to have a salad cup that was the entree. It's not a salad bar where they can go and get their, you know, they may have done that at the middle school.
We do have a vegetable and fruit bar.
Right. Right.
At all the elementary as well.
But they can't make a meal from the...
No, there's just another requirement.
Right.
They have an entree.
Yes.
Bill, one last question. Not seeing the contract here, but every year we'll have a discussion around the board table. And are, there are no fixed increases, automatic increases in the agreement at this point?
There is, it's tied to the CPI.
So it is automatic?
Well, we'll bring it to you for renewal with, at the CPI rate. And that's dictated by ISBE again.
We don't have, there's, it's not open discussion, I guess, what you're saying? It's automatic? It's not, it's not based on performance or quality or anything like that? It just happens?
Well, it's, it's up to the CPI. So we could, if we have issues, we could talk to, talk to Chartwells and, and, you know, say we're, we're gonna recommend, you know.
Okay.
Ms. Bar?
I know wheels and meals is something that Gary Cattelloni used to say a lot. And now he's spent quite a bit of his time on meals and wheels. And I'm, I'm sure Dr. Schuler has had that experience in the past as well. I just wanna make a comment that I feel that making this move, and I understand that we must, because the ISBE is prescribing that we must, for really less than a 1% difference between our current vendor and, and our new vendor, it troubles me because of transition issues that you have every five years. I've been on the board 14 years and every time we've changed, we've had transition issues. And that is not disparaging to, to Chartwells, for sure. And I think a system that makes you make this decision based on less than a 1% change and less than really $1,000 per building is not a good system. But having said that we're in a box, I think we're in a box and this is something that we're going to need to do. But I, I wanted to kind of state that publicly. I think we've had a good relationship with Airmark. I appreciate that relationship. I think they've worked with us to make changes to our food, you know, as much as they can within the federal guidelines and, you know, and they've been very responsive to our needs. So.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I recall for a vote. Do I have a motion in favor of this action item?
So vote.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Cogdo, seconded by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Center, would you call a vote, please?
Any board members vote in line, please. Mrs. Cogdo?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I don't know her. I, I think it's, this is implied, it's, you know, it's not a significant enough number and I'm concerned with transitional costs and so on. So I don't know.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, because it's within the law that we have to do this, but I shared Mr. Matheson's side.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The motion passes. Next item on the action item list is the approval of wireless refresh for Wheaton North High School and Wheaton Warrenville South High School. Dr. Schuler, we will obtain some other questions from the staff?
Yep. And again, this is an item that we discussed with the board at the committee, the whole as a part of the master technology plan. It is an upgrade of our existing access points. So it's not a, not a complete reconstruction of the wireless infrastructure. And a couple of things that I think Mr. Mac has shared before that I'm just gonna remind the, the board of. One, the access points that we're now moving to at the, the high school level were not available at the point in which we originally did the, the wireless infrastructure, nor where they needed it at that point in time. So this is an upgrade. The existing access points are not being lost in the district. They're gonna be moved to our elementary buildings to increase coverage at our elementary building as well. And, and so the cost that you're approving tonight is the cost for the actual access points. The, the hope is that through E-rate, though, a, a good chunk of this will return to the district in revenue. Mr. Mac, anything?
No.
What did I miss? Anything?
No.
I do, I do have a question. Were there no other bidders or, because we haven't got, there was no information provided other than CDW was chosen because of thus and so. I'm just curious who else, who else was involved?
There were total three bidders, PDA, I can't think of the word, Sentinel and CDW. Also, CDW was the only one that could offer all of the services. The other ones came in with just the access points, not the high availability, which is giving us that no failure insurance piece also that's on that bid.
Rob, we can talk just a little bit about the criteria points in which those three vendors were evaluated.
Yeah, they're evaluated using a weighted scale, looking at the evaluation of one repeatability. Price was, was the big one, which where CDW did come in as the lowest bid. Can they handle it? Do they have the reference checks check out? And it's part of an E-rate bid and they're standing in the community or long-term, not the same, newness of their building or newness of their company that they're not a, it kind of stops everyone from coming in and saying, yeah, I can sell you the access points as well. But if they'd only been a few years, again, they, they wouldn't have been bid out. So they were matched on five criteria.
What is, can you, for public information, talk about what E-rate, RFP means? What's E-rate?
This year's the first year. This year and next year, the federal government has put in, I don't wanna quote the figure, I think it's 1.3 billion extra dollars this year in E-rate money. E-rate has always only covered our services, which is our phone line, our internet, and we receive approximately 49% back in those approved services. We receive them as a revenue, not, we don't mark them as an expense for phone services, internet, those types of services. This year was the first time they opened up what was called, it's like category two, which is infrastructure. And they covered costs all the way down to the access point now, to the actual device, just not the device itself as broadband and internet technology is, you know, essential now in school classrooms. So we applied for this. Of this, 270,000, the part that is eratable is about 205,000 of it, which right now we're at a 51% E-rate. So if approved, again, the entire, whole government, your entire nation is applying for those 1.3 billion. If we get that, we could get 51% of that back in a revenue. We don't know that till later, but right now you, you expense the whole expense hoping to get the revenue back.
And when, when will we determine, when will we become aware of that, that grant, if you wanna call it?
Usually early or late fall is when E-rate comes, when it was the old just for services. You do apply, application time in November through February. This year they extended it to April because of this purpose. So it could be even a little later because they did extend E-rate to April 15th. But again, we've expensed the money, but we could possibly get a revenue back for the cost of the access points, the cable, even that type of services.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a point of clarification, remembering back to the presentation from a few months ago and in the notes here in the summary, we're getting all the existing access points refreshed, but we're also increasing the number of access points. So there's gonna be one access point in every classroom. Right now, I think it was one every other classroom. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's about anywhere between 60 and 80, depending on which building you're looking at. We were zigzagging the room, so they kind of went across. So we are also adding approximately 70 poles, if we were to average it to both the schools, or, I'm sorry, wire poles with the access point, but, and gaining about 210 access points to go down at the elementary this year.
Not that this is the goal as we sit here, but if we went to one-on-one technology, would this have to be upgraded beyond what we're doing here?
No, this would not.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Hearing none, I ask for a motion on the second to approve the wireless refresh for Wheaton North High School and Wheaton Warrenville South High School as presented?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Matheson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Inteher. Ms. Center, would you call a vote?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogdo?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The third action item is the approval of a resolution designating depositories. Again, Dr. Schuler, is there any presentation from the staff?
Farley, any comments you can make on this? No, was the answer.
We'll see if that generates any comments or questions. Are there any comments or questions from board members to Mr. Farley on this routine motion?
Is there anything different from last year that we're approving tonight?
No.
No.
I have a few words.
Hearing no further comments or questions, may I have a motion to approve the resolution designating depositories as presented?
So vote.
Moved by Mrs. Inteher?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cogdo. Ms. Center, would you please call a vote?
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogdo?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I abstain.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The fourth action item is the selection appointment of the IASB governing board representative as explanation to board members and to the public. Every two years, each board in the, in the division, this division of the ISBA, ISB, is asked to designate one of its members as an IASB governing board representative. The representative will serve for a two-year term. The representative will help alert all members to events and encourage participation. The representative will carry district concerns to the division meetings and then report division activity and actions back to the board. For the last number of years, our representative has been, Rosemary Swanson, since she was a director of the IASB, so it was convenient to have her be our representative. I'm going to ask for a volunteer to accept this appointment. I have received one acknowledgement to be a representative from Mr. Paulson and another acknowledgement, if no one stepped forward, Mrs. Inteher agreed to be the representative. So I'm prepared to appoint Mr. Paulson unless somebody else would really want to step forward and want to be the representative.
Anybody?
Barb, did you want to?
I offered, but...
What? I'd like to make a motion at this point to nominate, nominate Mrs. Inteher.
Oh, no!
As a, again, you know, if, again, if you get elected, you can still decline. But, you know, I think, again, you know, your knowledge of being a ex-president of the board and your many years of service, I think you could well recognize in following Mrs. Swanson's footsteps appropriately.
Is there a second to that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. I appreciate that. My mic wasn't on.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Matheson, seconded by Mr. Paulson. Yeah, Ms. Center, would you please?
Mrs. Cogdo, seconded.
Mrs. Cogdo, seconded?
We go. Which one did you pick? Okay.
Ms. Center, would you please call a vote?
Mr. Matheson?
I think the question is, Ms. Inteher for this, that I currently have? Yes, I have, oh, yes.
Mrs. Cogdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
I do vote yes.
That's a big, Mr. Gambiani?
No, certainly.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Matheson, for your kind words.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. Now, I guess we have the fifth action item pertaining to the approval of a lease agreement for elementary staff laptops. This was the item that was moved from the consent agenda to the action item agenda. Is there any other information we need from staff? Hearing none. Are there any comments or questions for staff? Hearing none? I don't have that question.
So 550 laptops, 368 document stations, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, the document stations are only where they need to be connected to projectors and things like that, like correct classrooms. Again, many staff are mobile and don't project or don't need more than the document stations. The 360 is actually more than the classrooms we need in case there are some ancillary areas. Again, to just, you know, I won't say have some on hand, but that we did get a little bit over the actual classroom count. We needed a 330. There are plenty of offices, administrators who would, you know, benefit from having a document station. So, and as we move through that, have some in case some break, it's a low cost.
They're Chrome. Are they Chrome?
No, these are done.
No.
Mrs. Inteher?
To, to kind of answer the question asked in public comments, so I'm guessing that when you say staff laptops, so there's the classroom teacher, but then at each of our schools, we have our special teachers, our ELL, our school psychologist, school social worker. So we're taking care of all of those people, not just the classroom teachers. So that's correct?
That is correct. And again, I just, one of the things that I wanna point out from my view, I think this is actually a very efficient use of resource within the, the district. So as we've done a lot of work with the FIT Committee that Mr. Paulson referenced earlier, and staff members talk about their availability to mobile technology to engage students in the way that we want students to engage in, in learning through the use of technology, rather than buy an additional piece of technology for a staff member in the way of a Chromebook or, you know, some, some other type of device, those laptops had to be refreshed anyway. That lease came up. And so this is kind of a two-for-one, and that actually through approaching the lease this way, you are saving money that you might otherwise be purchasing devices down the road for adults that now can go to kids when you continue to, to buy. So I, I think not, not only is this a good decision, it is a smart use of resource while aligned to your goals.
So what's the plan for the laptops or desktops that the teachers have now? Where do those go?
Those are under lease and have to go back. We are buying out the labs at the elementary and a few other where desktops need to stay. We are buying those out at a fair market value cost because we still have to have the labs at the elementary.
So that lease, you know, again, we're, this is a complete set of new computers, okay? And, and at the end of that former lease, we return that older equipment. So there's no reason why we would wanna consider a different cycle or off-cycle on something like this to, to, you know, so that we're not replacing them all at one time because we're doing it through a lease program. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and again, you're, you're really, as you, you've addressed in the past the leases, you kind of bid them in, in stages as well. So this is the elementary building. And so there will be two additional cycles of, of lease as the middle school desktops and middle high school desktops come off of their lease agreement as well. But this, this year, the elementary lease comes off first.
Is there any reason why you wanna buy these? I mean, is there a substantial cost? I can't believe that if we're leasing a computer for three years, it has much value at the end as far, I mean, is, would it, do we investigate the cost to do this? Because maybe a third of them could last another year. So do we, how do we deal with that?
And with this lease, too, I don't know the details, there, there is a buyout option. So, you know, certainly as you, you get to the end of the lease, if, if it's determined at that point that there is significant useful life left beyond that three-year lease, there would be an option that you could, could buy it out if at that point you did the, the cost analysis and determined we, we'd get enough value to, to continue to run them. The, I think when you're, you're talking now certainly about a laptop or more mobile technology, you're, you're right. You're getting to that point where beyond three years, even if you were to keep them, you're refreshing batteries, you're buying, you know, equipment that really makes that not a good cost proposition.
Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, I ask for a motion on the second to approve the lease for, the lease agreement for elementary staff laptops?
So vote.
Moved by Mrs. Inteher?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cogdo. Ms. Center, would you please call a vote?
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogdo?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crab...
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Matheson, I quit down the joke saying...
I abstain.
Forgot to ask you, but I didn't want to. Sorry.
For informational purposes, we have posted on the agenda the monthly financial reports for public and board review, as well as the Freedom of Information Act requests that we have received. We will now move to reports from board members. Are there any other, are there any board committee reports prepared for tonight? Hearing none, are there other reports from board members on other topics?
Just a fun thing, I happened to attend one of my adopted school's fundraiser, Poplar School's fundraiser this past Saturday, and it's a little tough one. Third graders can run a three-mile race faster than you can run two miles.
I have the same exact experience.
So I love quickly.
Any other, any other reports? If not, I have none.
Do you want, were you going to talk about the annual board topics calendar, or it's listed here, you were going to talk about that? Okay, fine.
Well, sure, welcome to the added comments. Before we had to transition, and the leadership team, Mrs. Intihar and I discussed with Dr. Schuler the preparation of the annual board topics calendar for the board. This would identify that each time of the year that we routinely address certain issues. For example, in July, we'll be addressing the draft implemented budget. In June, we're going to be addressing committee assignments. In July, again, we'll be addressing goals, which may not be as involved as they happened in past years since we're now into 2018 vision statement that we've adopted in November, the levy, and so forth. And so that will be circulated, when, Dr. Schuler?
That's a good question. That was intended to be circulated to you this evening, and I just realized that it's not in your green folder. So that annual board calendar will be circulated to you very, very soon.
And am I correct, this is also, you posted on the district's website?
Correct, yes. And the one, just let me mention with that, so this is not to limit other topics that the board will choose to address at meetings or other topics that come as a result of study topics, but it just gives you a sense of the things that come up routinely each year at key points in the year, kind of gives you some sense, it's laid out by quarter. So for each quarter of the school year, kind of each three-month span, you have a sense of the key issues coming up in front of the board. So then, again, if you need to prepare, study, or you want to go back and look at, you know, reports from previous years, it kind of gives you a heads-up, both for the board members and members of the public.
And just a reminder to board members, I've invited you to join me in a cup of coffee or maybe a glass of wine, depending upon the time of day, to kind of get to know each other. Jim Gambiani and I met this morning, and had an enjoyable time, and Jim Matheson and I have agreed to meet after he returns from his trip. But if you can contact me at some point in time and suggest some time and place to meet, I would like to follow up with all of you. I also circulated a question about informal dress code. I don't anticipate any changes. I was surprised at the responses I got. So we will continue whatever our practice has been, and whatever that may be, so. Also, with respect to Illinois Association School Board resolutions, this is the time of year that we generally consider whether we want to submit any resolutions to the Illinois Associated School Boards for the convention in November. This typically has been driven largely by Ms. Swanson again when she was on the board. I intend to contact Ms. Swanson after this board meeting to see if she has any suggestions for resolutions, but of course, if any board member here has any ideas for resolutions, please keep those in mind at best, bring them to my attention either between now and the next board meeting or the next board meeting, so that we can work on them. And the other thing, I've gotten a recommendation from one board member to consider maybe starting our board meeting times at seven o'clock, and that's something I'll discuss with Dr. Schuler, but in the meantime, I'd like to have input individually from board members when it comes to what your views on that may be. So that completes my report tonight. Topics for future discussion, again, with reference to Vision 2018, we're going to be reviewing the community engagement plan, and also we may be discussing in the future board representation on the WWEA bargaining negotiating team. Announcement, our next meeting is the Committee of the Whole meeting on May 27th, which will begin at 7:30 here at the School Service Center. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for June 10th at 7:30 PM, again, here at the School Service Center. And again, now we turn to public comments for non-agenda items.
Before we do that, a question?
Going back a little bit there, we kind of skipped quickly through this, but the resolution at the ISBE convention, I'd be curious someday, and it doesn't have to be today, that what things have been passed and what impact they have had in legislation or changes at the, you know, at the state level for those that are passed. I think, you know, I want to challenge a little bit our involvement and, you know, continued support of that organization, because, you know, again, I don't want to go through this process and at least no conclusion, or they're not acceptable, or they're so diverse that, you know, because of the downstate schools and, you know, the Cento ones, those 16 issues, because we're, you know, we're in conflict with the same school. So I think it's important that we, you know, before we spend the time developing resolutions, that we really see what's happened in the past, and how successful and what impact they have, so.
Jim, I think it's a fair comment. Related to this experience before, my first year on the board, I drafted a resolution along with Rosemary to promote consolidation of school districts on a voluntary basis. I thought it made all the sense in the world, and when I appeared before the Resolutions Committee of the ISB, the downstate representative just voted that down. So there is some instances where we do have this conflict within the organization.
Dr. Schuler, maybe you could give us some kind of guidance? With the Vision 2020, it is the consolidation of ideas and thinkers, and do we anticipate that resolutions of this nature would have a greater impact? Are we better off focusing on the, and how would we end up? I don't understand how that's all going to work together and then our resolutions are going to be kind of separate, if you, if you see what I'm saying. I mean, it's, I share, I share Mr. Matheson's concern about how this is all, everyone wants to put our efforts all in the right place, in the place where they're going to have the biggest impact. So can you just give us some guidance on that? And it doesn't have to be right now, but if you could give us some guidance on that, that would be really good.
And it's probably not going to be now, but I certainly, to Mr. Matheson's question, we can look into that to really see what has been the trend. I would agree that I think a lot of the interest, certainly of the association, is going to be trying to drive policy around the, kind of those big Vision 2020 pillars that are out there. But let me dig up a little information before we talk about it.
I'll now move on the agenda to public comments for non-agenda items. We do have one sign up for such comments, Ms. Kristin Haas.
Hi. I'm wondering for...
Ms. Haas, do you please, were you here at the beginning of the meeting when I gave our little protocol for Republicans? Bear with me, and everyone else bear with you. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on a non-agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and gathers your thoughts and questions. We strive to make the best decisions for the district, and public input and variety of opinions is very helpful. Board must protect civility and inform in this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, the democratic process, and your comments tonight. Please use the microphone that's just been handed to you. State your name and address, and if you're uncomfortable stating your address, tell us whether you are resident or not in the district, and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. Please proceed.
Okay. My name's Kristin Haas. I live in Warrenville. Do you need the actual address?
No, not for the...
I'm wondering when we're going to offer Spanish if our, for the grade school children? Starting in kindergarten?
Kristin, I just want to clarify that the board won't respond to your question tonight at the meeting. Certainly, they'll hear, it sounds like, you have an interest in the board?
Yeah.
Considering that in the future?
Yeah, so right now I have my, got my three-year-old in Spanish, and she's excelling really well, and I feel like knowing a second language is very beneficial for math and for science, which also is part of the STEM, the STEM thing that we're getting into. So I noticed, like, with her speaking, she has all the accents and things that, like, the high school kids don't pick up on. So learning at such a young age would really benefit her and the other children. And so we have her in a class, a private class, and then we have videos and we practice. So I just want to know when that's going to be available.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson. There being no further action to come before the board in open session, I ask for a motion on the second to adjourn the meeting to closed session for the purposes of discussing collective negotiating, collective bargaining negotiating matters under ILSILCS 120/2C2. Action may be taken following the closed session. May I have a motion to move to closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded, seconded.
Seconded. Yeah. You laughed at me when I did that. Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Center, would you?
Mrs. Intihar.
Oh, so, oh, Mrs. Intihar, seconded, all right. Ms. Center, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Intihar?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I may want a motion to reopen here because I think we need to deal with the dress code based on the heating and, so give it some consideration till a future event. I will, yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Hereby, John Newell.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Yes, absolutely. Congratulations.